I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that the meeting has been duly called, that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. The time now is 6:00 PM. All right. Item 1A invocation as well as Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Hubert.
All right. Feel free to join me if you so desire. Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for this day. We're grateful for the opportunity we have in this country as we celebrate our independence this month to gather here freely and to administer the business of this school district. We are grateful for all those who serve and are willing to give their time. We are grateful for the teachers, for the administrators who show so much love towards these youth and helping support them so that they may be successful in their life in whatever endeavors that they may have. We ask you to be with them throughout this summer, and we look forward to having them come back in a month or so from now. And we ask these things in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Join us on the pledge.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honoring the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Hubert. All right. Item 2A, awards recognition. Receive Conroe ISD Education Foundation update.
With us tonight, we have our Executive Director of our Conroe ISD Education Foundation, Ms. Maris Blair, and she's joined by Nelda Blair tonight to give us the update, and I think they have great news to tell us. I can sense it.
This is our favorite. It's our favorite night of the year because we always get to bring great news from the Conroe ISD Education Foundation. I'm Nelda Luce Blair, proud 1976 graduate of Conroe High School, and I'm also the Chairman of the Board and President of the Conroe ISD Education Foundation. As you know, every year we have our big fundraiser, and in the spring, our Education Foundation breakfast. This year was no different. And what we've been doing is giving out scholarship after scholarship after scholarship since then. So, Maris Blair, our Executive Director, is here to kind of detail that for you, and you have a report in front of you. Maris?
Good evening. First of all, thank you for letting us present this evening. It's such an honor to always be in front of this board. You're so pleasant, and I want to thank each and every one of you, every year, how you support our foundation. We couldn't do it without you. All right, so, good news. It's pretty straightforward. The first page is all scholarships. Money, money, money. We gave out a lot of money. Close to $200,000 in scholarships. And that was for continuing education, for your student scholarships, for the All Means All. This was the first graduating year for the Sam Cable All Means All. So, we have that information here, and we've already received their information. These kids are so excited to go to college, they're getting $2,000 that they've earned every semester, you know, from ninth grade. And of course, our paraprofessionals for the bilingual and special education. There's another $24,000. So, up to $200,000 is what we spent of helping your employees get their masters, their doctorate, to get these paraprofessionals, to help them get their bachelor's degrees and become certified teachers. And also get some of these senior students a good boost to go to college and get some money. Also at the bottom, the welcome back, I think that's the most popular thing among your new teachers. You know, if you're a Conroe ISD graduate and you become a new teacher, you get a $100 gift card, and as you can see, we gave out 87 gift cards. And I do want to give a big shout out to BBVA Compass. They stepped up to the plate again this year, and they waived all the processing fees of $5.95 per card and waived it, and that's a huge difference to us. So, they stepped up again, and they were able to sponsor that for us. Next page, as everything, the breakfast. Appreciate seeing every one of your faces there this year. That is what we've raised and other related donations, $219,000. And that includes some of the scholarship monies that come in at the time of the breakfast, like the Gerald Iron Senior for the athlete, the NOAC Foundation, and also the Dick and Mary Cole Special Education Scholarship. All those monies come in at the breakfast to help us, and that is our figure, $219,000.
Huge.
The next couple pages, it's just giving the kudos to these students who received these scholarships. We have a committee that reviews all the student applications and meets the criteria. This is a great shout out to them as way to go. They're on their way to college next month. And then the next page is the All Means All. Like I said, this is the first group of the All Means All. They're all going. And then 24 paraprofessionals. Those are the schools that they're coming from, because now the list is getting so long, I don't want to kill trees and just print almost 200 names out. So, we decided to kind of bring it all together and just tell you what schools are coming from. And then the next page, of course...
Hey, Maris, could you give like just the one-minute version of what the All Means All Scholarship is, just to make sure everybody knows what that is?
Sam Cable, as everybody knows, he just recently retired from Conroe High School. They go through with the counselor, and they pick some ninth graders who are at risk but, you know, meet an education threshold to receive a scholarship, and they earn $50 every semester. They keep a grade point average, they attend classes until they graduate as a senior. And Sam Cable monitors these, I mean, really monitors these and gives them that extra push and mentors them. And out of the original, the first year, there was originally 12, 10 of them are going to college, and they met the threshold. That's really big, to stick with it from ninth grade till you graduate as a senior. That was really big, and so, he is seeing the rewards of this. And he does raise all the money, correct? And we monitor, we administrate the money, but he is the one that gets out there and shakes the trees for the money and gets people from the community to really support these kids. And every year, we do an award ceremony with them, and their parents come, and everybody cries, because it's a good thing. It's a really good day. And there are the campuses for the 128 Continuing Education Scholarship. This is open to all employees that have their bachelor's, that are seeking their masters and their doctorate, and they can apply for it every year. So, we have quite a few return applicants that are getting their masters and their doctorate. And the last two pages, this is where I really feel the foundation is blessed, way beyond blessed. These are our sponsors. So, and PBK and Ellisir and all these, Duratec, DBR, IBI, the list goes on and on for two pages. So, anyway, that's all I got for you. Good news.
It's great news.
And it is such an honor to be a part of this. Yes.
So, I should have noticed from being on the board years ago, but are y'all aware of the type of foundation that y'all have being anywhere else? I mean, I know we can't clone y'all, but are y'all cloning the program?
Well, actually, today, I've met with another school district that's trying to kind of revamp and reshape their education foundation to mirror Conroe ISD Education Foundation, because they think this brings more back to the district of helping people advance their education versus giving specific project grants, except they really feel like this will impact the kids more in the classroom by helping educate the person in front of the classroom, plus the administration who brings the curriculum, the nutrition, everything together. It all impacts every child.
I mean, y'all have made such an impact in our community, and I was just hoping, besides what you've built here over the last several years, you know, if you could reach out and build it in other places, that would be even a phenomenal more reach.
And that's true. We have, we've received quite a few inquiries about this, especially at the smaller school districts, many that don't have education foundations and want to start one.
Aren't three or four districts always in attendance at ours?
Yes, yes, yes. We always invite them, and they'd love to come to hear Dr. Knoll speak usually, and to see what we do. But we have mentored almost three of them now, I guess, that have started, and several others that are just trying to reach the next level. So, you're right, the reputation, you know, gets out, and they want to know how we do it. So, we're happy to share. We're certainly not in competition with them.
Nelda, I just want to say thank you to you and to Maris and to the rest of your board for all of the hard work that you do and all of the effort that goes into it. It is so much appreciated. I know that our district employees that have been able to take advantage and advance their careers because they're able to advance their education, and I just want to say personally thank you to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[716.16]
Resources readily, which of course impacts instruction and it makes a huge difference in the lives of our students and we appreciate all that he does for C I S D and our students. Thank you.
Busy man.
Next up, Human Resources Department is Judy Wold. Judy joined the Conroe I S D family as a paraprofessional in two thousand and two as an instructional aide. She joined our Human Resources team in two thousand and sixteen as the substitute specialist when she transferred from Cryer Intermediate. Her performance evaluations over the years provide a narrative glowing comments. Judy has been described as being a hard worker, someone who shows initiative, as someone who is helpful, someone who is organized, who's a great communicator and great with students and staff. And on a daily basis, she demonstrates her kindness in this position, her kind and giving spirit when working with campuses and substitutes. She's always positive, always professional. In addition, her H R team members are also very appreciative that Judy is a fabulous cook. Judy Wold is a wonderful asset to the Human Resources Department and very deserving of this ambassador award this evening.
That's done. Great job.
Before you sit down, you know, I just want us to think about something. Every day, if you go to work or you go to school and you come in and your computer turns on and you go in the supply closet and there's things that you need that are in there and you don't know how the bills get paid or you don't know who's recruiting our substitutes or Richard, I need to talk to you about iPad, I need your cellphone number. But you know, your iPad, if you have problems, whatever it is, it just works. I want us to think about the next time you see one of those people that takes care of those things and remind them that you really, really, really appreciate them because we really do here at Conroe I S D have some great people and you're among them, obviously, as ambassadors today. And we just want to say thank you for all that you do. It's behind the scenes, you're not out there in the public eye, but you know, you're great people and you help make Conroe I S D the great district that it is. And I just want to, on behalf of the board, personally say we thank you and appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Judy, did you bring any snacks tonight?
Congratulations. Really appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Really appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
I don't know if you remember me.
You got a big job, don't you? Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. It's so nice to meet you.
That's the way to go right there.
All right. All right, item two D, citizen participation. Ms. Goffrey, has anyone ready to address the board?
No one has signed up.
All right, let's keep it moving. Item three, consent agenda. Gentlemen, I have received no request to move anything off the agenda.
Move approval with consent agendas presented.
Second. Gentlemen, I have a motion of a second and a discussion. Here or none, all in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. All right, item four, curriculum and instruction. Receive four A, receive twenty nineteen preliminary star three dash A and E O C results. Dr. Knoll.
And Dr. Phillips and Dr. Hines will present our star results.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. This evening, Dr. Hines and I are pleased to present our two thousand and nineteen preliminary star scores. We say preliminary because the final scores do not come out until August. The scores we're presenting tonight include the scores of all students who took the assessment. Between now and August, the state will clean up the data and will remove any scores of students who were not enrolled in Conroe on our snapshot date. Once scores are finalized, you'll receive a more comprehensive view about where we stand. Since the new star assessment has come out, we've been following a pretty consistent pattern and this year again is no different. For the most part, when the state goes up in one area, we tend to typically go up as well. If the state goes down in an area from one year to the next, we typically follow that pattern. We do have a few variances this year, but it's usually just a point or two away, so let's go ahead and take a look. With elementary, third grade reading, you can see that the scores, the state stayed pretty consistent and we are still five percent above the state, which you'll notice that in every score we're above the state. Third grade math, you can see the state scored at seventy-eight percent and we were at eighty-four percent. With writing, we worked really hard on writing this year. We were happy with our four-point gain. You'll see that same type of gain with the state as well. Fifth grade reading, you can see that there was an increase with the state, same with Conroe I S D. In math, you can see the state had eighty-nine percent, Conroe at ninety-three. And then in science, you'll see that the state is at seventy-three percent and Conroe is at eighty-four for two thousand and nineteen. Sixth grade reading, we were eleven points above the state. And then in sixth grade math, you can see that we are nine points above the state as well.
Dr. Phillips, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, of course.
So those scores, that represents the number of students that met or exceeded some standard?
It's the percent of students who met at the approaches level of the assessment. Yeah, the assessment system is very complicated. There's actually three different scores that are derived and so we're just showing you approaches right now because that's all we have.
Okay, all right.
We'll get more of that later.
The lowest passing standard. All right, that's what I expected.
Yes.
Good evening, again, we'll kind of hit through some of the highlights of the secondary scores. And in the junior high area, the junior high, you'll see the pattern is outperforming the state on every assessment from a level of everywhere from four to eleven percent and with an increase from last year in six of the seven areas. So taking a quick look at reading, you can see eighty-two percent to the state's seventy-four and in math, seventy-seven to seventy-three. And then in seventh grade writing, seventy-seven percent to the state's sixty-nine percent. And eighth grade, we have the eighth grade preliminary scores in reading, ninety percent level to the state's eighty-four. And in eighth grade math, ninety-three percent to the state's eighty-seven percent. There's, of course, eighth grade is fortunate to have four assessments, so we have two more. Science with, we formed at eighty-eight percent compared to the state's seventy-nine percent. And we saw a jump there, pretty good jump this last year. And so certainly as we have those kind of jumps, we like to look back and see what did we do that was so successful and keep doing it. And then seventy-eight percent in social studies. And for the high school areas, you'll see again some positive trends. English and of course, English one, we're at seventy-seven percent to the sixty-three percent of the state level. And then in of course, English two, seventy-seven percent to the state's sixty-seven. So we saw an increase in both of those areas, which we were looking for. And of course, U S history, we were at ninety-seven percent, which is very good, and compared to the state's ninety-three percent. So that's the secondary, any questions?
I have a question. Just for the star scores, correct or wrong, but those stars, the star testing and the scores, that only applies to public schools, correct? Do private schools and homeschool programs, that does not apply to them, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Williams, we had one of our science fair winners was just able to join us, so if I could invite Dr. Caffrey back up.
All right.
I'd like to recognize our final award winner was able to make it.
Board President, Mr. Williams, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, heartbeats. We do have an eighth grade student who is recognized for her stellar work at the Texas Science and Engineering Fair, Rotten Ross.
What project, what was the?
My title of my project was the effect of different spices under the generation of planaria model and tank details. So I was trying to find my natural.
Well, can you say that slower?
Eighteen grand.
Yeah, yeah. I'm shaking my head, I just want to know somebody smarter. Can't leave me hanging. Congratulations.
Outstanding, impressive.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I wish you the best.
Great speaker, too.
Red pepperoni.
All right, item, okay, item five, administration, receive information about senior priority pass program. Dr. Knoll.
All right, our director of communications, Sarah Blakel, will present the site.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. I am here to share some information with you about a very exciting program we are looking to offer starting this year. To further show our appreciation for members of the community, especially those age sixty and above, living in the Conroe I S D boundaries, we will be adding a senior priority pass program, which will allow interested residents to receive free admission to athletic events hosted by Conroe I S D, excluding playoffs, as well as fine arts events, excluding fundraisers. And so all that we'll be doing is asking people to fill out, who are interested to fill out an application, show some form of I D so we can verify and address, and then they'll get a little card that they just wave when they go in and they can enjoy all of the talents of our students for free. Do you have any questions about this program?
So will there be a link on the website for the application? Give me the nuts and the bolts of how that will work.
Yes, so what we'll be doing is we're actually going to be sharing this information through a variety of sources. And we're going to be putting an ad and a community newsletter so that, you know, targeting that portion of our population so that they can see the benefit that we're offering. And then we will also be, I'm sure it will be in our local newspapers. And we'll have a link just off of our website under the community section.
What do they get, like a card or badge or something?
Yes, we will give them a specific card that will be good for.
I think it's a great way to keep the community engaged in our district. I think it's a great opportunity. I mean, if I'm sixty years old and I don't have any children in the district anymore, but it's not about having just children in the district, but it's going out and supporting the community in general. And I think it's a great opportunity, I'm glad we're doing that.
Thank you, thank you. We're happy to be able to show our appreciation for that portion of our community.
For those that may have a caregiver with them, does it also include like one caregiver to go with them as well?
That's a great question, and I think that we would probably be able to accommodate that for people who depend on someone to attend, you know, functions outside of their home or residence.
Perfect.
I think that's good.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Blakel.
All right, item five B, receive capital improvements update, Dr. Knoll.
All right, Danny Phillips is here tonight and Mr. Fosterstead to present this item.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. It's my pleasure to give you guys the capital improvements update. We'll start with our first facility, which is Suchma Elementary. You'll notice the site is progressing well. Started the site improvements such as the irrigation landscape over the last couple weeks, so we should be on schedule to have it ready. Here's a picture of the front entry of Suchma Elementary. You'll notice the front entry is going in just as planned. Here's a picture of the interior of the foyer, showing completion, wall, acoustical panels, et cetera. Here's one of our completion status of one of our classrooms, showing the millwork, some of the teacher desk being installed, ceilings, carpet, et cetera. Here's another finished picture going on of the library. And here's a finished picture of the kitchen serving line. Another completion picture of the gymnasium. Currently, we're scheduled to open up in August fourteenth and we're on schedule.
When will we take possession?
So we actually moved the principal in on Monday of this week.
Okay.
So we're currently, we're currently working on technology and furniture and things of that nature.
Great, thank you.
Am I missing one before, is that a new element, the stone?
It's a different elevation look for us this time.
Yeah, I noticed the stone also.
The stone on the columns, yeah, that's a great look.
It's a correlation with the developer out there in that area, so.
It's very, it is very pretty.
Very nice.
Is this, this project running, it's obviously on time and on budget, under budget?
It is, it's running, it's running on budget. Time is a little bit of an issue, but not much, so due to all the rains, but we're getting it.
Okay.
Perfect. Next facility is our Austin additions renovation. This is a site view of the existing facility completed up on the roof slide, the existing old fifties section completely removed. Here's a front view of the front entryway. Here's one of our typical classrooms with furniture being moved into place, ceilings, carpet, millwork, et cetera. Here's a final view of the Austin showing the technology marker boards, teaching walls of that nature being completed. This one's also to be opened up August fourteenth, we're on schedule.
Can you go back to the very first picture there for Austin, the pond in the back?
That is our detention.
That's going to be a detention pond?
Yes, sir, that's our water detention.
Okay, so we'll have a fence up around that?
We will have a fence around that.
Okay, all right. So is it really, you think it'll hold water? I mean, it's, I know it can hold water, I'm just saying, do we anticipate that there will be some water in it? I'm just looking at it, knowing all the rain we've had, and I don't see any water.
Yeah. So the, if you notice the west parking lot, the majority of that west parking lot?
Yes.
On the right side, it runs into the detention, the overflow happens to the east and going back to one oh five to the north.
Okay, so this is just kind of for the overflow?
Well, that's to catch the west parking lot and then it flows out.
I got you, okay, all right, thank you.
It's a detention pond, not a retention pond.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go back. I was out there today and I just, I just want to make sure where, where is the queuing line? I mean, this is teacher parking over here behind the new gym on the right?
The right-hand side is the teacher parking and the bus drop-off.
And that is behind the school.
That is on the west side of the school.
Yes, that is the back door.
That's on the east side.
It's on the east.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, east side, yes.
Now, show me where a bus drives in and where it goes. Does it come in the teacher parking lot side? In other words, I'm looking for the queue space because it's hard for me to tell from what I'm looking at here, or when I was out there today, whichever, okay? We were supposed to increase the queuing to get the traffic off of one oh five, so that's all I'm interested in.
So if you, if you look at the east driveway there?
Right.
That is where the, the bus comes in.
Okay.
And, and it comes all the way up to here and drops off, wraps around and goes back out.
Okay, now how about the car line?
The car rider is on the west drive.
Okay.
And if you were out there today, you noticed all of this is new concrete now?
Yes.
So they'll, they'll drive in and right here, this is all cleaned up, if you noticed, all this is a drive. This actually goes right here where this trailer is, that'll be gone here shortly, and they drive back out.
Okay.
That's a double stacking lane there as well.
There was just too much new concrete and still too much moving and cleaning up and, I mean, stuff that I couldn't tell. Thank you, appreciate it.
Excellent, any more questions? All right, if that's it for the, for the Austin Elementary, the next is Stockton Junior High. Stockton Junior, here's the front elevation showing the entire facility being built out. The, the project is moving well. Here's an exterior elevation showing the waterproof, waterproofing on the building envelope progress. This is an interior elevation showing the C M U block, the M E P ductwork, all of the utilities occurring on the inside. This picture here is on the exterior showing the football field, the track and the P V field, which is our photovoltaic side. And this one is scheduled to open up in August of two thousand and twenty. We are on schedule, it's going good.
Can you remind me how many panels we'll have out there?
Um, I don't recall exactly, but it seemed like there was somewhere around probably a hundred, a hundred and ten panels. There you go.
Hundred and fifteen rows?
Hundred and fifteen rows. So we split the fields, we split the fields up to optimize the site.
Okay.
So a hundred and fifteen rows equates to, there you go.
Okay, thank you. I knew it was a lot. Say that again, if you would.
Eight zero percent? Yeah, eighty percent.
Yeah, I know it's supposed to be almost.
And in the summer, literally, if it's not used for summer.
We'd be giving back.
That's correct, at a percentage, yes, sir. All right. The next, the next item is our, our Conroe High School additions renovation. As you guys know, this is a, a two-part addition renovation. What you're seeing here is the academic second floor. When getting ready for finishes in here, you'll notice that the ceiling tile is just about to drop in on that. Floor tile is completed. Here's one of our classrooms, just had the carpet installed, the ceiling tile is near installation for that classroom. Here's another one of our classrooms showing that the carpet's still covered and the, one of the classroom millworks are being installed in that area. That, that second floor is scheduled to open up August the fourteenth of this year, we're on schedule. The following picture is on the first floor academic. And this one, we've, we've actually renovated, we've demoed out all of it, we're going back in with new complete walls, M E P side of it. And this one is scheduled to open up December, January of this, this year. And that completes our, our update.
Andy, you did a good job on it.
Thanks, sir.
Brought it home.
All right, item six, business and finance, Dr. Knoll.
All right, Mr. Darren Rice, our CFO.
All right, we have several bids to look at this evening and I'll just start with the first one. So, good evening, President Williams, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we're recommending that the board award R F P nineteen dash oh five dash oh two grease trap services to Magna Flow Environmental, Inc., for an estimated annual expenditure of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Requests for proposals pertaining to the purchase of grease trap services for the district were emailed to registered vendors through the electronic C I S D e-bidding system. Three vendors submitted a response. The request for proposal was advertised two times in the Conroe Courier. Vendors were asked to provide firm prices for cleaning the C I S D grease traps. Best value offers are recommended for board award.
A move with approval is presented.
Second. Gentlemen, we have a motion, second, and a discussion. Here or none, all in favor? Passes unanimously, let's go. Item six B, consider award R F Q gasoline, diesel and propane, propane fuel.
Yes, we're recommending the board award R F Q nineteen dash oh five dash oh one gasoline, diesel and propane fuel to the five vendors listed below for an estimated annual expenditure of three point five million dollars. Electronic bid invitations were emailed to sixty-three vendors through the electronic e-bidding system, twelve vendors responded. The proposal was also advertised two times in the Courier. Gasoline and diesel prices for school districts are set by the oil price information services. This bid is for the surface, for the service of supplying us with fuel and all of the cost inclusive, including any applicable fees, tax or any other cost. The cost of this service is calculated by adding a price differential to the fuel price that is set by the oil price information services. Award shall remain firm for one year through July of two thousand and twenty, automatically renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through July of two thousand and twenty-two. Price comparisons with the current bid shows a differential net decrease of nineteen percent. Proposals were evaluated by the transportation department and reviewed by the purchasing department. I recommend you.
I move it, Dr.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
I noticed in the, the material, looking at the evaluation totals, there are a couple of cases where, say a particular vendor was selected for gasoline and then they came in a close second for biodiesel. Did we look at any cost benefit for choosing the same vendor for both those, even though they came in second, perhaps if we used them for two different fuels, we might get a cost break? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, yeah, understand, I do not think that was one of, one of the evaluation criteria that we had listed, but that is a good point, we could look at that in the future, is that right, Rick?
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was not used as criteria.
I mean, I understand if they're a distant second, we might not want to look at it, but when they're just in a couple of points, there might be some cost benefit of using them for multiple fuels.
I got a quick question for you on the, on the bidding process. So you use, you use the electronic bid, you said you spent through an electronic bid. My question is for those, for those companies out there that work with school districts and work with government entities, do they, are they all aware of this type of bidding process? In other words, are we, are we getting it out there to all those that are interested in it? Because you said you had, how many respond, twelve, twelve hundred? Did I hear that wrong?
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve vendors responded.
Twelve vendors responded.
Yeah, we actually send out, we sent out to sixty-three different vendors, twelve actually responded.
Okay, and, and the electronic bidding process, I understand that that's what we use, that's fairly common practice.
Yeah, we've been using that, that process for several years now. Now, it has actually improved our communication with, we've actually attracted various vendors because we're able to use different services to pull those vendors in. So actually, our vendor participation has increased with this system.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Item C, charter bus and student group travel services, R F Q, Mr. Rice.
Yes, sir, I am recommending the board award R F P nineteen dash oh four dash oh five charter bus and student group travel services to the sixteen vendors listed for an estimated annual expenditure of five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Requests for proposals pertaining to charter bus and group student travel for the district were emailed to registered vendors through the C I S D e-bidding system. The proposal was advertised two times in the Courier. Sixteen vendors submitted a response. Vendors were asked to provide pricing for charter buses and/or student group travel needs. Vendors were asked to provide their current rates and sample quotes for common trip scenarios. Not only price are we looking for, you know, looking for from these vendors, but there's two other things we're looking for. First is to make sure they have proper insurance on their vehicles and number two, make sure they have a proper safety rating. Our purchasing department every month goes through the files and goes through the reports to make sure that their safety rating for these charter companies are held in good seed. So, so we do have them fall off from time to time where we have to, you know, we have to cut one of these vendors loose, so, so that's very important.
Do we need a motion?
At this moment, I recommend.
No, we need to go ahead and get a motion. General motion?
I move approval.
We have a motion?
I second it.
We have a second discussion, Mr. Hussle.
I'm just going to ask, what, what is our current policy on, I mean, because when you're talking about five hundred and seventy-one, it's not necessarily the, the school's budget. Each school has a budget for this type of thing and they're taking longer trips, they take this kind of bus rather than the school buses, okay? What is the current policy, be it band, be it athletics, be it science fair?
Previously, previously, we had a policy that was set at a certain mileage. Now we look at it basically on a case per case basis, so it'll go to the appropriate assistant superintendent, they will, they will review and approve to make sure that a charter bus is appropriate at that time. You know, charter buses are used through all of our, you know, above district sporting events for our football teams, bands, et cetera, because they are traveling, you know, greater distance than, than let's say a hundred miles where it used to be, stuff like that.
So there's not a certain mileage, if, if somebody was playing regional football in the Astrodome, or Astrodome, listen to me. We played there once, but anyway, like I said, Houston is not as far, but if it was a regional thing, they would approve that, just like they would approve to Temple or Dallas or Waco or wherever.
We used to, we used to have sixty miles as a, as a, as a hard point, nothing below that, but we changed it to case by case just because there are those instances where prudent judgment would say, okay, they need to use a charter bus for this program. So that's what it allows us to do.
If a booster club or support organization is paying for No, no, we need to go ahead and get a motion. General motion?
I move approval.
We have a motion?
I second it.
We have a second discussion, Mr. Hudson?
We're just going to ask, what, what is our current policy on, I mean, because when you're talking about five hundred and seventy-one, it, it's not necessarily the, the school's budget. Each school has a budget for, uh, this type of thing, and, and they're taking longer trips, they take this kind of bus rather than the school buses, okay? What is the current policy, uh, be it band, be it athletics, be it science fair, okay?
Previously, previously, we had a prop- policy that was set at a certain mileage. Now we look at it basically on a case-by-case basis. Um, so it'll go to the appropriate assistant superintendent, they will, they will review and approve to make sure that a charter bus is appropriate at that time. Um, you know, charter buses are used through all of our, uh, you know, above-district, uh, sporting events for our football teams, bands, et cetera, because they are traveling, you know, greater distance than, than, let's say, a hundred miles where it used to be, stuff like that.
So there's not a certain mileage, be, you know, if, if, if somebody was playing regional football in the Astrodome, or Astrodome, listen to me. We played there once, but anyway.
We, we, we.
Like I said, Houston is not as far, but if it was a regional thing, they, they would approve that, just like they would approve to Temple or Dallas or Waco or wherever.
We used to use, we used to have sixty miles as a, as a, as a hard point, uh, nothing below that, but we changed it to case by case just so, because there are those instances where prudent judgment would say, okay, they need to use a charter bus for this program. So that, that's what it allows us to do.
If a booster club or support organization is paying for this, do they have to use one of the vendors off that list?
To drill down just a little deeper on the safety aspect.
Yes.
So, tell me one more time, you said the safety C, CD?
Well, where, where there's, there's, there's safety score that they're.
Score, but where, and where do you get that information?
Rick, can you, can you talk a little bit about their safety?
Department of Transportation.
So we pull the U.S. Department of Transportation safety reports each month and check those, and we keep files on them, and so we update everyone as they, making sure. We've had them where the, some will come through and say unsatisfied, something come up, and we'll immediately strike them and let everybody know, can't use that vendor anymore.
Every, every bus.
Glad you do. Yeah, no, I was just following that. Make sure we're the ones looking at that, not relying upon.
Right, yeah, yeah, we, we review that every month.
Trust me, we're good.
You should know that's. All right, uh, we have a motion second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Appreciate that. Okay, we're still on the, item D, preliminary, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty proposed budget overview.
Rice?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, uh, truly my pleasure to present the preliminary two thousand and nineteen, two, two thousand and twenty, uh, budget. This is the first time we've able, we've been able to see the whole budget together, uh, you know, after the effects of House Bill Three. But, uh, I would first like to recognize the finance staff that are here this evening. We have Janice Towers and Karen Garza. They're really the ones who, who get in the nuts and bolts of this thing and put it together for us, so thank you for your. Now, each year, I like to start my, uh, budget presentation with our financial highlights for the year, and the district continues to get recognized from the state comptroller's office for our transparency presentations. We get awards for our transparency stars for traditional finances, debt obligations, and contract and procurement presentations, and all these presentations can be found on the district's transparency website. Uh, Texas Smart Schools was formerly known as the FAST Report. Uh, this program was started in the state comptroller's office, and it highlights success in two dimensions, academic performance and cost-effective finances. Conroe ISD is one of two districts, it was three last year, Friendswood fell off. So we're one of two districts out of eleven hundred in the state, over eleven hundred, that have received five stars, which is the highest rating for ten consecutive years, so we're very proud of this award. Our recognition. Uh, our ERG ranking, ERG stands for Education Resource Group, and they perform an analysis of the two hundred largest districts, and their ranking is also done on academic and financial performance, and, uh, ERG ranks us second in the state, only behind, uh, H E B.
And how big is H E B?
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four, about forty, twenty-four thousand.
About a third the size of Conroe.
And where is Birdville, anyway?
Fort Worth area.
I've been around a long time, I ain't never been to Birdville.
It's in Fort Worth, up in the Fort Worth area.
Birdville's in Fort Worth?
Yeah, somewhere up there.
It's easy when nobody can find you to be on the list.
Wow. So we're the largest, large district.
The largest, large district, yes, sir. So now we'll start with the legislative du- update, and, you know, when the eighty-six legislative session began, the governor came out, and he really had three primary goals. One was to pres- to have property tax relief, one was to put more, uh, money into school classrooms, uh, and the third was to fix school funding. You know, my thought is, in their attempt to fix property tax relief, they might have made school funding a little bit more complicated, at least in the first year, as we move forward through with House Bill One. But with the passage of House Bill Three, uh, the legislature, and they called it the Texas Plan with House Bill Three, it provided five billion dollars in property tax relief. They have four and a half billion dollars for education reform, two billion dollars toward teacher pay, and three and a half billion dollar, uh, billion dollars for recapture, uh, reduction. Now, we went through these in details at the June fourth, so I'll just kind of go over some highlights. Um, House Bill Three increases the basic allotment from fifty-one forty per ADA to sixty-one hundred and sixty dollars per ADA. You have a question, sir?
No.
No, okay. Um, and this is the mechanism that, that the legislature used to actually, uh, do their tax compression that we'll talk about in a little bit, and then also be able to provide, uh, the teacher raises. Um, it requires districts to provide full-day pre-kindergarten to eligible four-year-old students. Uh, we're estimating this cost in the first year of implementation at about five million dollars if we were to go to full-day pre-K, uh, starting at this school year. It provides funding for increased teacher compensation. Um, thirty percent of our gain from House Bill Three must be spent on compensation. Seventy-five percent of that thirty percent must be spent on teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. And you'll see in our presentation that that requirement's about a two and a half percent raise for our teachers, and you'll see that we exceed that requirement of House Bill Three. Um, it creates an index for, for, uh, compensatory education funding based on census blocks. It extends career and technology education to seventh grade. Um, it replaces the transportation linear density calculation with a per-mile allotment, a much more simpler calculation. It's about a break-even for our district. Uh, moves to the use of current-year property values, and we'll see that effect as we go into next year. Uh, it increases the golden pennies from six pennies to eight pennies. We currently access four golden pennies. And it provides uniform tax relief for the biennium, uh, seven cent compression, compression for our tier-one M and O rate. Uh, as you will see, we'll be proposing an M and O tax rate at ninety-seven cents for this year. Uh, new allotments is the dual-language allotment and the dyslexia allotment, dyslexia allotment. Uh, we've also seen a, a lot of growth in dyslexia. In two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, we had two thousand three hundred and forty-two students identified as dyslexic. Uh, in eighteen nineteen, we got three thousand two hundred and forty-four, so that's a growing program. That'll generate about two million dollars. The dropout recovery allotment and the college, career, and mi- mi- military readiness allotment will generate about one point five million dollars for the district. The, uh, FAST growth district allotment will generate about fourteen point six million dollars for the district. That is because we are recognized as a, in the top quartile of growing districts. And then the early education allotment will generate about four million dollars for the district, and this allotment is what is identified to help us with the implementation of our pre-K program. And then we have a safety and security allotment that was from Senate Bill Eleven, and that will generate about three hundred thousand dollars for the district. Now, there are some allotments that were repealed, and so we must look at those also. The gifted and talented allotment was repealed, the high school allotment, and the staff allotment were all repealed. That's about eight million dollars worth of funding to the district. Although the gifted and talented allotment was repealed, we still must have a gifted and talented program, and, and, and we must report that to the state. So that's still a requirement, although it's no longer funded as a separate allotment. Okay, our two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, uh, tax rate comparison with our, with our peer school districts, you know, our tax rate is currently at a dollar twenty-eight, and we're seventeen point six cents below our peer average tax rate, and we're four cents below the closest district to us, which now is Fort Bend, since we've added them as one of our peer districts. And, and even with the implementation of House Bill Three and some of our tax, uh, proposals that we have coming forward for the board, we still feel like we're going to be in very good position, uh, with our peer districts. Just a quick review of our general fund balance. Uh, this chart represents the fund balance for the general fund over the past twelve years. In two thousand and eight, our fund balance was at seventy-six million dollars, and we're anticipating ending two thousand and nineteen at a hundred and thirty-nine point six million dollars. Uh, also during the, these years, we've transferred excess fund balance to do various capital projects, and you can see each of those projects listed below. And the years that they, uh, were done are identified in the red block. Red box, red boxes above. Okay, we'll start taking a look at the major components that drive the budget, and they begin with our two thousand and, uh, nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget objectives, and they include to meet the needs for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. And that includes opening of Salt- Suchman Elementary and the eleventh grade at Grand Oaks High School, and, and as always, we want to provide a competitive compensation plan. And we always place a high priority on safety and security at our campuses. This year, in addition to the, uh, additional police officers that we hired last year, we're also hiring additional prevention control officers at our high schools. And then we want to protect the district's operational infrastructure by establishing a district-wide maintenance fund. And we'll talk about that, uh, in more detail as we move forward. Our certified property values, our property values are estimated to grow at five point five percent this year. That'll add about one point nine billion dollars to our property values, bringing our certified value to thirty-seven point seven billion dollars. One thing we must point out, that with the passage of House Bill Three, uh, the tax increase that we can recognize in the maintenance and operation funds moving forward is only two and a half percent. So if our tax values grow more than two and a half percent, it will compress our tax rate further, and you'll see the, uh, the effects of that as we move further, uh, it, with House Bill Three. Our attendance data, our state revenue estimates, and campus expenditure budget allocation rely on our enrollment data. For the upcoming two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget, we're using an enrollment increase of thirteen hundred and fifty students for a total enrollment of sixty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven students. This year, we're increasing our ADA percentage up from ninety-four percent to ninety-four point three percent. And it is always important to note that we have to budget based on our enrollment. However, we're funded from the state based on our average daily attendance. Just a quick graph of our enrollment trend, you can see it's pretty linear, about fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred students per year. So now that we have discussed those major components that really drive the budget, we will now look at the effect that they have on the budget itself, and this is, uh, our two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty funding estimate. And on the tax revenue side, um, with House Bill Three, we're actually looking at a tax revenue decrease, even with our five point five percent AV growth. We have to realize a seven cent tax decrease, um, and that's a loss of about seven point, seven point seven six million dollars. However, um, you know, in, in the past, we've transferred ten million dollars every year from the, from the general fund to the debt service fund to buy down our debt service tax rate. Um, we're proposing, um, to, to not continue that program and recognize that revenue, uh, in the general fund, and that way we'll be able to com- to create a capital maintenance fund, and we'll talk about that in detail, uh, in, in a little bit. So total tax revenue increase, if we take into account the ten million that we've been transferring, is two point two four million dollars. Our state revenue, based off of our thirteen hundred and fifty student growth, and the implementation of House Bill Three increases by forty-five point one one million dollars. We're able to, once again, increase our investment income by a million dollars, and we're increasing our TRS in-kind funds by five million dollars. TRS in-kind fund is a reporting requirement from T E A, so you will see the offsetting, uh, expenditure, uh, later on in the presentation. So total estimated available funding, fifty-three point three five million dollars. So now looking at the expenditure side of the budget, this is our two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty salary increase, if y'all excuse me real quick. It includes a three and a half percent raise for our teachers, librarians, nur- nurses, and counselors, and also for every teacher with six-plus years of experience, they will receive an additional five hundred dollars. That's at a cost of nine point six million dollars. Pay grade A E levels one through three will also receive a three and a half percent raise. Pay grade A E levels four through ten will receive a three percent raise. That's at a cost of one point seven million. Administrative business will get a three percent raise. Administrative support, instructional support, auxiliary employees, those are hourly employees, they will all receive a three and a half percent, uh, pay increase. Uh, total cost of the pay increase, fourteen, uh, million forty-six thousand dollars. This is our approved two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty teacher hiring schedule. It includes a beginning teacher salary of fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars. The three and a half percent general pay increase is, uh, on the midpoint is equal to two thousand dollars, and as you can see reflected, uh, teachers with six-plus years of experience receive an additional five hundred dollars.
Is that at, um, C I S D or in gen- in, in all, in education?
What, the, the increase for six-plus years?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that is a requirement of House Bill Three. It requires you to differentiate the raise for, uh, teachers with, uh, six-plus years of service.
Are you saying that the, the services that they qualify for, is that just for C I S D services or other school district services?
Collective.
And it's collective? Is that, what I think the answer is, collective?
Collective, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, our personnel for growth, uh, for support at the campus level, uh, you know, once again, thirteen hundred and fifty new students coming in, uh, the opening of eleventh grade at Grand Oaks High School, and the opening of Suchman Elementary. It includes a hundred and fifty-three new positions, uh, that are made up of a hundred and seven teachers, ten administrators, nine professionals, and twenty-seven paraprofessionals. That is at a cost of roughly nine million dollars. And then to support those campuses, um, we, we're requesting fifty-six point four new positions, mainly in our transportation, police, maintenance, and custodial departments. That is a cost of roughly two million dollars. Uh, total new positions, two hundred and nine point four. Uh, total payroll, uh, addition, uh, ten million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, just a summary of our projected expenditure budget increase for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Uh, we just discussed our additional personnel for growth, that's, uh, ten point nine eight million. Salary increase was four point oh five million. Um, we have the line item in there for the potential employee retention stipend. Remember, that is potential. So we have a line item in there for the budget, because we do still have some, some unknowns out there in the budget, you know? You know, the possibility of a two thousand and nineteen November, I mean, uh, November bond referendum, if, you know, how, how that potentially could fall, that those funds might be needed for, uh, summer work, safety and security at our campus level, so, so just some thoughts there. Some of the programs, I didn't list them all, but we talked about them earlier, pre-K, C T E, bilingual, dyslexia, comp ed, school safety, uh, career in college, ready, and military readiness increases about seven point two nine million dollars. Uh, other expenses, including utilities, insurance, fuel, and supplies, that's the majority of the utility increases for our new campus. Insurance, we are seeing a slight increase in our, in our, uh, property insurance this year, so that's reflected there, that's one point eight one million dollars. Uh, the offset to our TRS in-kind funds, five million dollars. Total operating expenditure is forty-four point one three million dollars. Uh, the next line item you'll see is the transfer to the capital maintenance fund for ten million dollars. That's the ten million dollars that we're currently transferring to the debt service side. We're now, uh, recommending as, as we listened during the May two thousand and nineteen bond referendum, and we listened to certain groups, and, and, and I'll just point out the, the Patriots PAC, you know, talked about us having a lot of maintenance items in the bond, and then also the associated cost of interest on those maintenance items. Um, so they had concerns about that, so we listened to them, uh, we listened to our focus groups, and they also brought up these maintenance items. Um, so this is our recommendation to address those items. This is funding ten million dollars per year. Uh, you know, if, if there's a potential, you know, bond for five years, that would be up to fifty million dollars, uh, that we would, we would pull those items out of a potential bond and pay for those out of cash. Uh, so you're saying, what does that get us? The interest savings on that fifty million dollars, and, and, and this was, you know, I thought in my head, I knew it was a, a million or so a year, but it's thirty-nine point nine million dollars in interest savings, uh, if we pull that fifty million dollars out of a bond. So that, that's just, uh, you know, something to, to think about.
Well, those ideas weren't just discussed by the, by those.
Well, I was just using the forensics.
We, we as a board had just discussing that as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, uh, total expenditure is fifty-four point one three million dollars.
Mr. Rice? Yes, you mentioned the property insurance increase. Was that just a, an industry premium increase, or was that because of, of claims that were filed?
That, that is, we, we have been very fortunate, Conroe ISD. We have had, uh, some, and we, and, and still the proposed rates are great, and we haven't finalized, you know, we're still, we're, we're still working on those. There, but there will be a slight increase. The, uh, the industry out there, and, and we would think it would be from Harvey, or, or one of those, it's actually Hill. We've had more Hill instances in the Dallas, San Antonio area, more widespread losses from these insurance companies, that the market is almost dried up. There's not a lot of providers out there. Our rates are still, when you compare us to any district in our area, well below what, what, what other districts.
They were not rate increases that our carrier imposed on us because of a high number of claims.
Right, that's right.
The market.
So this is just our revenues and expenditures together for, uh, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget. On the revenue side, our beginning revenue budget, five hundred and two point two seven million. We have fifty-three point three five million dollars worth of new revenues, giving us a projected nineteen, twenty revenue budget of five hundred and fifty-five point six two million dollars. On the expenditure side of the budget, um, our beginning. On the expenditure side of the budget, um, our beginning expenditure budget was four hundred and ninety-five point four five million. We have fifty-four point one three million dollars worth of new expenditures. That includes the transfer to the capital maintenance fund for a projected nineteen twenty expenditure budget of five hundred and forty-nine point five eight million. That'll leave us with an estimated budget surplus of six point oh four million dollars. Um, one thing we'll notice is when you, when you hear fifty-four point one three million dollars, that is a very, you know, that is a, that is a large increase, but I want to just kind of explain that just a little bit. If you look in the revenue side, you can see House Bill three alone requires forty-five point one one million dollars of, of expenditures in our programs. So we have to account for that. And on the other side, it's our implementation of the new capital maintenance fund, uh, that make up that. So, so if we hear, oh, it's, you know, a huge budget increase, because we've been very good at keeping our budget increases below our guidance of inflation and enrollment growth. This year, we're going to exceed that, but those are the reasons.
I have a question. How's that, how, is that going to be taken into account by the Conroe's office and, you know, transparency and all the, all the ratings that we're always proud of having? Are they going to take into account that these issues are forced upon us? I mean, cause.
Well, well, every, every, every district, yeah, we're compared against other districts, so they're all, you know, they all have the same.
Like, I mean, if you just have a, have a huge salary increase in the past, that could have cost you one of those stars.
Sure.
I mean, you know, and so, uh, even though it's measured against other districts and they're facing the same situation or law, if you will, uh, I, I just wasn't sure that it was going to allow anybody to qualify for that. You see what I'm saying?
Right, yeah. I, I, I think the one area that, that, that we might have to watch is our capital maintenance one, because that, that might change some of those, some of those percentages, because that's ten million dollars, but, but I think we'll be okay. So that did show a, uh, potential, uh, surplus in the budget. And, and of course, our, our recommendation is to save the surplus in the general fund to support the twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, I have a pro forma, uh, to present to you this evening for twenty twenty-one, but it is very early. There's still a lot of knowns moving into that, into that budget. Um, and then if there happens to be any funds left over, we can utilize that to, uh, sur- surplus to support the capital maintenance fund, to possibly reduce bond debt requirements and cover any unforeseen expenditures. So this is our two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty proposed tax rate. As I said, on the M and O side, we're recommending a tax rate, it's in the middle column, of ninety-seven cents for maintenance and operation. That is a nine cent tax decrease, uh, on our M and O side. On our debt service side, we're recommending a debt service tax rate of twenty-six and a half cents. That is a four and a half cent increase on the debt service side. Two of those pennies are from the, the tax rate swap that we did, so that's just a, a little, little odd there. For a total tax rate of a dollar twenty-three and a half, for a total tax rate reduction for the district of four and a half cents. So this is our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, uh, just shown in a, in a, in a pie chart broken down by major object. Payroll reminds our, payroll remains our largest expenditure at eighty-seven point six percent. Uh, contracted services are five percent of our budget. Largest item in there is utilities. Uh, supplies and materials, four point two percent of our budget. Largest item in there is fuel. Uh, equipment and other, one point four percent. Uh, the largest item in there is our property insurance. And then, uh, capital maintenance fund, uh, is about one point eight, uh, percent of our budget, and that is what it is. Total budget, five hundred and forty-nine million, five hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. So I've put together a little fund balance analysis for you. As you know, our, our, our objective is to maintain an unassigned fund balance that is twenty-five percent of our annual budget, which gives us approximately three months' worth of expenses. Uh, so looking at our preliminary budget of five hundred and forty-nine point six million, twenty-five percent of that budget would be a hundred and thirty-seven point four million. Uh, just to give you a range, twenty percent of our budget, uh, would be a hundred and nine point nine million. Our estimated unassigned fund balance at eight thirty-one and nineteen is a hundred and thirty-four point one million dollars, which is twenty-four point four percent of the budget. That leaves us just a little bit under, uh, our twenty-five percent target. However, uh, at a twenty percent target, that would leave us available twenty-four point two million dollars, uh, above that, above that target. So as I said, I have a pro forma now. You know, this is very early. It's, it's, it's our current understanding of, uh, of how the law will work. So, uh, let me walk you through it. Uh, our beginning revenue is five hundred and fifty, uh, five million, uh, sixty-two thousand. Uh, local revenue limited to two and a half percent AV growth. Now, we are calculating this with an estimated five percent AV growth for, for twenty twenty-one. That will actually compress our tax rate down an additional penny and a half. Um, but that growth will still be twelve point nine million dollars. We're also moving to current year values instead of the one-year lag that we've had in the past. So even with thirteen hundred and fifty student growth, with the offset of the, of the new, uh, current year values, our state funding is actually going to decrease by three point seven million dollars. Um, so our total revenue increase will be nine point two million dollars, giving us an estimated total revenue of five hundred and sixty-four point eight two million dollars. On the expenditure side, uh, five hundred and forty-nine, uh, point five eight million dollars. Estimate on our, you know, looking at a two and a half percent across the board raise, ten point five million. Additional personnel for another thirteen hundred and fifty students, about ten million. Other expenses, you, you know, we're opening stock-in, but we just heard great news that have a lot of offset with the new, uh, solar plant that, that's going out there, so, so we can adjust that slightly. So total estimated expenditure increase, expenditure increase of twenty-two million dollars, uh, giving us an estimated total expenditure budget of five hundred and seventy-one point five eight million dollars. And that's leaving us with a po- a potential deficit of six point seven six million dollars. And if y'all remember, we talked about, uh, in twenty twenty-one, the board will have the option to raise the M and O tax rate by one cent and access additional, uh, golden pennies. So that one cent tax rate will generate approximately three point seven million, but the state will kick in their fair share, so it'll be worth over seven million dollars to the district. And it is a one-time, uh, without having to go to voters, but it has to be a unanimous vote of the board for that to be approved for that one cent tax increase. And so that one cent would take care of, you know, if this was our budget, that one cent tax increase would take care of that, that potential deficit.
On the, on the revenue, the five fifty-five, what, what percentage of tax collections are you using for that as well? I know in the past, we've used like ninety-seven percent.
Yeah, in, in the past, when we were, when we were, uh, transferring that money to the debt service, we backed off a hundred percent collections, but this is at a hundred percent collections now.
This is at a hundred percent?
A hundred percent. Yes, sir. The, there, there is very little wiggle room now. Yes, sir.
Two, thirty thousand questions. One being with the proposed budgets and the proposed tax decrease. It's a very simplistic question, but are, that's, we're not cutting anything, are we, I mean?
No, we're actually increasing, yeah.
We're not, you know, we're not losing anything.
Correct.
And then secondly, um, how do you, does your pro forma for two thousand twenty, twenty-one include the implementation of the pre-K program?
That budget is being in, is in, in the nineteen twenty budget. And so what it does not include is any additional space, no, no, you know, seats for students. It doesn't include that, but it includes teachers, uh, curriculum and, and stuff like that.
New buildings, no.
No, no buildings, nothing like that. So, uh, what's next? Uh, we should re- receive our certified property values from the appraisal district on July Uh, we have a future, uh, public hearing on August sixth about the budget and on August twentieth. Um, and then on August twentieth, that'll be the date that we also ask the board to, uh, adopt, uh, the budget and the tax rate at that time.
August sixth, is that?
August sixth.
Workshop, yes.
Okay.
Good job.
All right, Dr. Knoll?
This meeting of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees is convened on July sixteenth, twenty nineteen. A quorum of the board is present, including the following members, Mr. Moore, Mr. Husbands, Mr. Kidd, Mr. Williams, Mr. Hubert.
I think we have a few more items, Dr. Knoll, before we get to the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. You know?
Okay.
Item six, uh, Eve. Mr. Rice?
Yeah, this is, uh, we're recommending, uh, that the board approve the attached resolution authorizing the transfer of seventeen million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general fund, unassigned fund balance to the debt service fund and twenty million dollars of the general fund, unassigned fund balance to the capital projects fund. As has been, been presented and discussed, the, the above-noted fund balance transfer of seventeen million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, is required to service the debt during the two thousand eighteen, uh, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. Seven point one million dollars of that is the, uh, effect of the golden penny that we accessed, and we actually arbitrarily decreased the debt service tax rate by two cents. So this is paying that two cents back to the debt service. And then ten million dollars of that is our annual ten million dollars that, that, that we pay down to the debt service. Next year, we will no longer move that if, if the board approves that and, and at the August meeting, but for now, we must do it to, to support this year. The twenty million dollars, uh, required for the capital, uh, projects maintenance funds, as y'all remember, that is available fund balance that we had that we earmarked ten million dollars to seed the capital maintenance fund, eight point five million dollars to purchase, uh, two, uh, future school sites, and one point five million dollars for busts. And at this time, I recommend your approval.
Do you want to have a motion, Mr. Hudson?
A second to motion?
Second to motion, all in favor, um, session, all in favor. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Six F, receive financial report.
I will look at the, uh, financial statements for the month of June for the district. Uh, these statements will include our general fund, debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. Um, the first statement we'll look at this evening is our balance sheet. Our balance sheet includes our assets, our liabilities, and our fund balances for the district. Each month, we like to take a look at our cash and investments and concentrating once again on our general fund. You can see we have cash on hand of five hundred dollars, uh, bank deposits of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, investments in the pools of seventy-three million dollars, investments with Woodforce National Bank of a hundred and twenty-two million, our long, our long-term investments with TCG Investment Advisors, uh, fifty-one point three million for total cash and investments, uh, in the general fund of two hundred and forty-six point four million. Just taking a look at property tax collections, uh, this year, we're currently at ninety-eight and a half percent collections compared to ninety-nine, uh, last year, so slightly behind where we are, but we still feel confident we'll, we'll reach our goal of a hundred percent. Next statement is our income statement. Our income statement includes our revenues and expenditures for the district. Revenues are broken down into three categories that are, that include our local and intermediate sources, our state program revenues and federal program revenues. And we can look at the detail of our local and intermediate sources, and we can see property taxes, largest generator of revenues for our general fund and debt service, uh, food sales and food service, and premium contributions and our self-funded insurance. This is our two thousand and fifteen bond referendum status update. Uh, currently to date, we've expended or encumbered five hundred point three million dollars with our two thousand and fifteen bond program. We have an estimate of about seventeen point nine million dollars to complete. That'll give us a total project forecast of five hundred and eighteen point two million dollars. That will leave us with about ten point three million dollars worth of contingency. Um, as you can see, a lot of the projects are closing out. Uh, the one that we still have out there, you know, with about fifty percent is Stockton Junior High, so coming to a close. And I, and I foresee that, uh, that contingency figure, that, that available funding remaining in this bond increasing as we close and finalize a lot of these projects.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
All of the bonds have been issued, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, you remember the, the, the bond was four hundred and eighty-seven million, and the board has kicked in over forty-one million dollars on top of that, so that's how we get to the five hundred and twenty-eight million dollar total bond package. Self-funded insurance, uh, looking good for the year. Total revenues, forty-one point five million dollars. Total expenses, thirty-nine point five million dollars. So revenues over expenses, right about two million dollars. So we're looking good heading into two of our busier months, July and August. Um, participation at our, at our clinic is, is really doing well, very happy there. We've had, uh, five thousand two hundred and eighty people elect our clinic, uh, for their health needs, and we're proud of that, averaging about five hundred and twenty-eight a month. Our investments, uh, par value, uh, of our total portfolio, four hundred and one point six million dollars. Uh, our pools are, are yielding two point five percent. Our investment with Woodforce National Bank, two point five percent. Um, TCG Investment Advisors have a WHAM of three hundred and thirty-seven days, but they're, they're starting to pick it up. They're at two point one five eight percent, leaving us a combined portfolio with a WHAM of forty days at two point four six six percent. And our benchmark, which is the ninety-day T bill, is currently at two point oh seven five.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Knoll? Are we sure? I was tired for Darren, I was trying to give him a break.
I was willing to take it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Rice, great job.
I was here for you, Darren. I'm sorry.
All right. This meeting of the Conroe ISD Board of Trustees is convened on July sixteenth, twenty nineteen. A quorum of the board is present, including the following members, Mr. Moore, Mr. Husbands, Mr. Kidd, Mr. Williams, Mr. Hubert, Mr. Sanders. The board will hear the complaint appeal of parents, Mr. and Mrs. S., in accordance to local board policy, F and G. This hearing is being recorded. Mr. and Ms. S.'s complaint is against various staff members at Derichin Elementary School. Because the complaint is against district employees and because personally identifiable information about a public school student could be revealed, the hearing will be held in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot oh seven four and five-five-one dot oh eight two one. The board will also go into executive session under Texas Government Code Section five-five-one dot oh seven one for consultation with the board's attorney. The meeting is now adjourned into executive session under Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one dot oh seven one, five-five-one dot oh seven four, and five-five-one dot oh eight two one. Everyone not associated with this hearing should leave the room. The board will take no action while in executive session. The time is now seven twenty-seven. The board is reconvened in open session, the time is now eight forty-three. The board will now make its decision. The board can uphold the decisions of the Level One and Level Two hearing officers. The board can overturn the hearing officer's decision, or the board can grant any relief they feel is appropriate. Is there a motion?
I move that we uphold the decision of the Level One and Level Two hearing officers.
For a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Unanimous decision? Um, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. and Ms. Shaw, the district will send you written notice confirming the action taken by the board. Okay? This concludes our hearing.
All right. We're back on the.
All right. Is that open session?
No, it's already open.
We are open at this point, so, uh, item nine.
Item nine B, receive local manual, policy manual update one-one-three and revisions to local board policy, D F B B.
Yes. Would you like me to tell you about update one-thirteen, or have you read it extensively? If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. If, um, not, we will have that on your agenda for next month to adopt the local policies that are contained in that update. And just a heads up, so you can, you keep your eyes rested up, the next update we get will have over one thousand pages in it from this past legislative session, and so, um, just your eyes. We'll be in October.
Okay. Have that much memory.
Item nine C, consider approval of settlement agreement in F G.
Now, you need to, you need to take a second.
We can go into closed session, or I can, um, tell you skeletonly what, what.
We just as well, Ben.
Or we would, it's up to you guys.
We are.
I want to understand if I.
I, I would prefer that we go.
Sure.
So you'll need to.
So, uh, closed session of the board will now be held on matters contained in board notice, uh, for this meeting as authorized by Section five-five-one zero point, zero seven one, five-five-one dot zero seven four, and five-five-one dot zero eight two one of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive s- meeting or session, then such action, final action, final decision, or final vote shall be either, uh, shall be at either, A, this public meeting upon reconvening of public meeting, or B, at a subsequent public, public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. A closed session of the board meeting will now be held, the time is eight four to six P M. The board is now in open session at 9:08 P. M. The next item, gentlemen, is.
C?
Item. Their approval.
Item C, 9C, consider approval of settlement agreement.
Mr. President, I move the approval of the settlement agreement in civil action number four, colon, 17, hyphen, C V, hyphen, 03011.
General, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion?
One quick thing before, I don't know if I can, we can say this to your own session or not, but something I've noticed is I'd go back and I, I watched the video of our, of our sessions. And that camera picks up everybody but the last person. Is there a way to upgrade that camera? Pick up everybody and everything that we're doing during those meetings?
We can absolutely, we'll.
It actually toggles. And so we try to reset it before, but yes, we will definitely.
Okay.
Work on making that more.
Please do.
Yes.
No problem. We have a, have a motion, gentlemen?
Motion adjourned.
Our motion?